Here, time to open the open forum. So, does anyone, anyone have anything to say other than that's what's on the agenda? I think you're all on the agenda, so. Right? Okay, good. All right, close the open forum, move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda has a typical three things, the approval of the agenda, meeting minutes, and the payment of bills. Unless somebody would like to poll and discuss, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Anyone?
So, I'd make a motion.
Motion, a second?
Ooh!
That guy. Okay. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along, Public Works Facility Report. Come on up, Mr. Hagan-Mueller. You've got some good news for us, I hope.
It's Wednesday. No, actually, things are going very well up at the Public Works Building. This week was great for outside work, so I'll start out with the exterior. We're doing some site grading around the building, putting the crushed rock around it, and tuning up the black dirt areas also. We completed with the road approach and the concrete aprons, so all the concrete is basically done right now.
Oh, that's great.
The roof panels showed up late this afternoon. We'll probably start installing Monday, just looking at the weather. It's supposed to rain tomorrow, Friday, and Saturday, Sunday. So, we'll keep you abreast on that. And basically, for exterior work, that's about it. For, and we will be starting, or we are gonna start final grade on the roadways and tune it up, and asphalt will follow. So, hopefully, late next week, we'll be able to put the first course down. For interior work, the concrete slabs within the building are complete, the block walls are complete. We're, door frames are to be delivered tomorrow, they're about a week late.
Ooh.
But, we're still able to work around them. We're about 85 percent framed out, and we'll start sheet rocking next week. And we're about 60 percent with mechanical, electrical rough in. Windows are about 70 percent, I think we have about four exterior windows and one door. And, and the garage doors are installed. So, it's, it's getting there.
Starting to look like a building.
Starting to look like a building. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Did we ever come to any conclusion about the fencing situation? Did you get bids back about the fencing?
We just got a proposal request today.
Okay.
From LHB. So, it'll be in our office, and it's gonna be, they actually have to redo it a little bit. There's something in the wording in the spec section that they wanted to change. So, we'll probably get that back tomorrow morning, and then it'll go out for bid.
Okay, so we haven't gone out to bid yet?
Nope. So, hopefully, the bids will, I think they're gonna try to do it on a really short timeline, so hopefully, within a week, we'll apprise them.
Great.
So, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Did we, did we discuss, I feel like I've missed a couple of meetings. At one of the past meetings, did we discuss the roof joyce situation at the council level? Did you guys talk about that?
Yeah. That one time I was in charge.
Oh, that's the time you got all kinds of stuff.
And fast.
And on your record.
I believe that. Did you have to shush anyone?
You weren't here.
The situation was that it was gonna be like 50 grand more to get them up to, and so then the thought was, why don't we just put that into a ground system instead of on the roof?
Right, well, and that's, yeah, I heard the update, I just didn't know what you guys had.
Oh, so you're testing us?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what was going on.
Thank you.
We were here.
I didn't know that you talked about it. Never mind. Thanks, Jay. Anything else?
Yes. Regarding the solar panels, is we are still waiting for some information as a proposal request from LHB, and we are hoping that'll be out this week, so we can send that out for pricing also. Because we do have to get pricing on the electrical and the solar panels and installation and stuff like that, so.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions?
Was there something else we're waiting on from SIMPA regarding the solar stuff?
Okay.
So, this is just for, like, information, or?
No, no, we're moving ahead, assuming things are gonna go.
Oh.
Because we're running out of time.
Gotcha.
So, the meeting that SIMPA was gonna be making a decision was today, and I haven't heard what came of it yet, but the recommendation that was going before their board was for a favorable price that would, I think, make it make sense for the PUC to even forward on that. So, we'll hear back results of that soon, and then we can see how many next week and start making some decisions. But in the meantime, we're just getting some of these things moving, so that we have a chance of getting it done.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else for John? I'll be up tomorrow morning to check it out.
You will.
What time are you going up?
I didn't even, I didn't do it this week. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
You too, thank you.
Thanks. Did George go to that SIMPA meeting?
No.
No?
Nobody.
Nobody did?
I would've liked to, but I hadn't saw that thing.
Okay. So, with that, let's move right along. So, the next thing we have is Planning Commission Report. Two items on the agenda for the Planning Commission. One is Resolution 2017-39, which is, small home wanting to be, having a conditional use permit for a vacation rental. It appears that, that no one showed up for public comment, and that the findings show that it's not a use that will take away from the zone. Do you have anything else you wanna say about that one, Tim?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about the parking situation, even though parking isn't required, onsite parking isn't a requirement in the mixed-use district, there was concern about the fact that the location of that home doesn't really offer very, very good access even to off-street parking, and that that is something that, that the owner, you know, we felt should be, should be looking at and kinda weighing in. Now, again, we're not gonna, we didn't require it as part of the conditional use permit, but, you know, we think that it's well worth his while to be considering that long-term.
Is there an option?
Is there access off the alley?
Possibly. There is access off the alley, but he was concerned about, you know, how tight a space that was back there, and, you know, it's not, not a, not an ideal situation. You know, the, the two parking spaces that are just east of the cobblestone building are located on the city, city right-of-way. Now, it's been used by people at the cobblestone building, it's kind of their parking, but it's really city right-of-way.
Prior owners of that house have used it for their parking.
Yeah, generally, the council tenants have tried to leave it for the house, so that's probably the primary option, but it's public parking, so.
But it is public parking, so.
Otherwise, you're saying, front of cobblestone to the east?
Just to the east. Kinda alongside it.
Where Cory parks his truck all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I guess current, then, because certainly prior owners have.
Yeah. So, otherwise, the Planning Commission recommended approval, they felt it was certainly compatible with the neighborhood. You know, Lonny operates a vacation rental adjacent, and of course, you've got all the other uses that are adjacent to the cobblestone building with its commercial uses, and felt like this was, you know, an appropriate use for that, that area.
Okay. Does anybody have any conversation they'd like to have about that? Or a motion to approve Resolution 2017-39?
I would make that motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It's, it's, zoned appropriately and everything, it's just, I'm sad to see another house go off the housing market, you know?
Well, is his, I mean, is his purpose to rent the whole thing out as a?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I guess it was unclear about that.
It's not that spacious.
It's not that.
No.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, the next one we have, we have a rezoning request. So, right at the base of the new gun flint, the redesigned gun flint, there are a couple of chunks of property down there that have been for sale for quite some time. Matt and Mike Rock have, growth?
Growth.
Growth. My bad. Yeah, exactly. Have requested a rezoning for that from the commercial industrial zone to either R1 or R2, preferably R1, because multifamily apartments, which is what they're seeking rezoning for, are not in allowed use in the commercial industrial zone. Is that a fair, fair assessment, fair thing? Tim, you got any other, any other thoughts, or, it seems like you had, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, you had a bit of conversation about this, because there were some criterion that, that weren't directly being met, but that you were able to, the discussion led to making it pretty aware that that's a very feasible use for the, for the property.
And I think part of the conversation was that, should we be, we be just looking at rezoning of this parcel, or should, should we be looking at a larger parcel, you know, which the Austins own a larger parcel on both, you know, on both sides of this piece? You know, we didn't, we didn't do anything with that, but it was raised that that might be a consideration in the future, and, you know, the potential for incompatible uses could, could exist in the future if somebody wanted to put a commercial industrial use next to the residential.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That would be, you know, be allowed after residential rezoning, so. But really, the Planning Commission felt that there was a need for this type of zoning, that, you know, the lack of multifamily housing options in the city is something that, you know, we've talked about, and, you know, the EDA has talked about, to make property available that, you know, developer is interested in pursuing development of, you know, made sense.
Yeah.
And Planning Commission recommends approval. There were a couple letters of support for the, for the request, noting that the demand and need for this type of thing was, was critical in the city, so.
And I saw that the recommendations, or the findings that, that the, that the Commission had, I thought they summarized well the change in that, in that area, change in use in that area, and also the, the need of the community, so. Does those properties, do they come right down to the, right down to 61?
No.
Okay, that's kinda what I thought. Cause I thought there was another chunk right there.
Yeah, I had to kinda look.
It's kind of a little sliver that comes down to the corner.
Yeah, that's.
Behind specs.
Yep, that's kinda what I thought.
So, speaking of the property, then, cause I had to kinda look to figure this out, I'm just sort of interested in, like, so have you had this property for a while?
No, I don't own it.
Okay, yeah, so it is a thing, if you can get this, then you do, okay.
Yeah, we, we have petitioned as a buyer.
And you, so then actually buy, so Austins own all of it?
Yes.
Okay. So, you just want as much as you think you need?
Yes.
As opposed to buy the whole kit and boot?
Actually, last week, it changed a little bit, that we may be, it'd be a different deal, but hit the house as well.
Down below?
Yeah.
Not specs, but the one they have.
Correct. But the part we're looking at currently is the piece in between the boat shop and the greenhouse, the old boat shop.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered how this all fell out, cause I know as you're sitting right, like, dead center, the larger piece.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2017-2.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
One second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The question was whether it should be R1 or R2, and the Planning Commission's recommendation was R1, and I think everybody kinda thought R1 makes sense in order to make the development more feasible, because the setbacks is really the only difference between the R1 and R2 zoning, and they're more favorable in R1, they're 25 feet and 10 feet, rather than 40 feet and 25 feet. Having said that, there isn't any other R1 property around there. There's R2 adjacent to this across the street, so legally, we'd probably have a better case for rezoning this if it's R2. I think it just points out a problem that we have, that our R2 zoning, its purpose statement says it was intended to locate multi-unit housing in a particular section of town. I'm not even sure if that concept is relevant anymore. It certainly didn't happen. Most of R2 developed as single-family homes, and we need more multiple-family homes, which, why we would make that more difficult in our R2 zoning doesn't make any sense to me. I think we probably need to relook at the whole R2 rules and decide if it's really suiting our purpose, which is to create more multifamily housing in the community.
Yeah, and, and the R1 district standards are very similar to the R1, and the R1 and R2 district standards are very similar, other than the setbacks, so. Feeling was, is that we wanted to offer the developers as much flexibility to develop that site as.
I do think that, I would, I would agree that we need to take a note, make a note and return to, to the R1 and R2 zones, and see what the, you know, what if any, the differences between them, and do we need the two? Do we, should we just, like, have it be one? Do we, how do we encourage the multifamily development? Because we've got somebody here who wants to do it, and they're, they're shooting for R1 instead of R2.
And this, this is the first request we've had in the R2 district that I can ever remember, and, you know, it's, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a remnant from, again, the original zoning ordinance, which was adopted back in 1970, and, you know, for what, what the rationale was in 1970 to today's, you know.
We need to take a look at it again.
So, the way it operates now is that either in, in either the R1 or R2 zones, in order for someone to do multi-unit housing, they need to get special permission through a conditional use permit. So, if, even if all of the R2 zones suddenly was transformed into the R1 zone magically overnight, we would still get to look at multi-unit housing on a case-by-case basis and decide whether the location was appropriate, whether the setbacks were appropriate, whether the facilities next door were satisfactory. That seems like a right way to go, something we ought to look at. So, even if we do zone this thing R2, it's gonna make it a little more difficult for him, it's probably the right legal thing for us to do now, but I think we should just kinda circle around and fix the whole thing.
Why is it the right legal thing to do?
Because there's precedent for R2 being in the area, there's not precedent for R1 being in the area, so it's, you know, it, it looks like it's kind of spot zoning, you know?
Yes.
And, and so that.
I understand that that's not ideal, but it's legally a problem?
Well, Chris, you wanna weigh in on this a little bit?
Sure. The, the council has fairly broad discretion in doing rezoning. And so, you've got, you know, rezoning is basically a legislative act, and the, the long and the short of rezoning is you have to have a rational basis set for the public health, safety, and welfare for what you're doing. There's a general prohibition against spot zoning, and, you know, when you're, when you're looking at rezoning something and everything else around it is zoned different, the, the general thought is, well, that, that kinda looks like spot zoning. The, the way to overcome that would be, is if the council can determine that, based on the public health, safety, and welfare, that they have a sound rationale for why this particular property would be zoned differently than the properties that neighbor it. So, I think if you, if you establish a record, and you certainly are talking about that right now, if you establish a record that provides a sound rational basis for why this property should be zoned R1, you may be able to, you know, withstand someone challenging it being designated R1 as opposed to R2. R2 is the more logical designation in this situation, but like I said, I think you could establish a basis to make this R1, but again, you have to have a, a, a sound rational basis for why this particular property would be treated differently than its neighbors. And, and secondarily, that zoning it R1 would not have a negative impact on the neighboring properties that are zoned R2.
So, Chris, could we cover our, cover our bases well enough by saying that we're, you know, going to be investigating the R2, the end to R2's efficacy, and potentially eliminating the R2 zone altogether, or something like that? I mean, I, I know that that's kind of an after-the-fact sort of thing, but just curious how that, you know, how that would shine through. Seems kinda silly, but.
But, can, do you?
Yeah, I don't, Mayor, I don't, I don't think that would be a, you know, a basis for deci, well, I mean, it could be a factor in your decision-making, but you have to make your decisions based on what the zoning is in place at the time you make the decision, not how you might change that zoning in the future. So, you have to work within the legal parameters as they're set right now. Certainly, going forward, you may wanna look at some of these other things, and look at potentially rezoning them or changing your districts. Certainly, that could be a factor in what you're doing, but I think you would need, you know, you would need more than that. And some of the, like, some of the discussion that you've had tonight about, you know, the, the differences between R1 and R2, and how that doesn't work very well, and, you know, those types of issues, that does establish some, you know, decent rationale for why you would want to potentially make this R1. The most conservative, safest thing to do is zone at R2. That would take away any argument of, of anybody that wanted to challenge this, and maybe nobody will, that it was spot zoning and designated in R1.
Do you, and so the, the main difference is the fact of what setbacks are, correct? And it's 40, 40 on the front, 25 on the sides, and?
Well, sheets are set.
They say right there?
Yeah.
Do you have footprints? I mean, do you have an idea on, like, you know?
We have an idea, but we're, I mean, until we get, it's only approved, we haven't seized it. My brother's gonna be the architect on the project, so.
Sure.
We're probably gonna start with a 14-unit building, and then as that building gets occupied, we'll proceed with more in the future.
Sure.
The reason we, Mike was the one that said, cause I was under this crazy assumption that in multifamily zoning, you could build multifamily housing, but that's not the case. And the neighboring properties on either side are zoned commercial industrial, which the setbacks are closer to the R1 zoning.
Right.
The R2 zoning is the most restrictive, so that's why we went for the R1.
Sure.
It would be more consistent with what's going on with the neighboring properties.
Sure.
Well, in my, my reasoning, and it would, it would be really handy to have the footprint, but I understand you don't, you don't, it's, put no horse before, or the cart before the horse? Put no horse before the cart?
Yes.
That's where he wants it.
But, but my rationale is just that with our current housing situation in Grand Marais, one of the things we've talked about looking at was just the density and how we're using our land. And so, in my mind, R1 zoning makes a lot more sense because there's potential for higher density to meet our housing demand. And so, in this particular case, especially with multifamily, just enabling that more space, makes a lot of sense for the, the public health and safety of, you know, Grand Marais.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I agree with that completely. Density is the part of the solution to the problem.
So, we have, we have, we have a motion and a second on the table. This is all discussion.
And motion and a second, right, and I would say with that to the R1. I mean, that would be my, that would be.
Part about the ordinance is.
I think we wrote it that way.
Yeah, the ordinance is written for R1, so.
Just clarifying.
So, when things come up in the future, that sort of sets precedent that, you know, you're gonna go that route when someone else requests it, right? I mean, you're starting to say, or you're gonna get caught in this.
Circumstance dependent.
Spot thing, but then they're gonna, you know, but what was the rationale? I mean, this is probably the most substantive rationale yet that's come up, right?
And the thing I'd say is that, that there's, nobody was there to oppose it. The people that were there were there in favor, right? And, and not so much the zoning, like, what zone we put it into, but the idea of the project.
Right.
And so, I mean, maybe if it was, you know, if it was an infill situation, which maybe you consider this infill, but if it was infill in a fully developed block, and somebody were to come in and buy a vacant lot and decide, okay, we're in the R1, and we wanna, you know, I don't know, I guess, I don't know how that would, they could already do it anyways, I guess.
They could ask for permission to do it anyway. Yeah, so really, the, something else Kim just brought up, that the R1 and the R2 zones both do create an impact on the surrounding commercial zone, that they do establish a setback requirement that's new, a 50-foot setback from commercial uses from residential zone property. But it's the same setback, whether it's zoned R1 or R2. And so, part of the rationale here, too, is that this, the decision of R1 to R2 doesn't actually affect what happens to the surrounding property, has the same effect on them. So, it gives the developer the same, or virtually the same list of options for moving forward. It allows us to still do a case-by-case analysis of whether their proposal, their proposed development is right for the neighborhood. It doesn't create any differential in the impact on the surrounding properties, and it allows us to develop it in a more reasonable way with higher density, to try and meet a community need. So, yeah, I think there's something here, if your strategy is to, we wanna go R1, and we wanna develop a rationale, I think we can do that.
I think that we've laid that out pretty, pretty well.
And in addition to that, you know, if, after we take action on this ordinance, I mean, I would like to recommend that the council refer the whole issue of the R2 district to the Planning Commission for consideration.
Great, just hope you, hoping you'd say that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't just, I don't think that's a bad idea, but I, I thought that we were gonna be taking a real hard, long look at all of the zoning.
Yeah.
After the comprehensive plan, and so I would assume that would be part of that. But absolutely, that's one of the issues.
It might be something we might trust.
Gotta start somewhere.
Even prior to that.
Well, we, we already know that housing is an issue that's prominently featured in the comprehensive plan, and so if we were gonna start prioritizing which parts of the ordinance to look at, this is actually one that makes sense to start pretty quickly with.
What, sorry. Aside from that other one that we?
Nothing, wait.
No, go ahead.
Well, maybe we'll ask them to multitask a little bit.
Yeah, I brought this up when we did the, the housing and business up around the corner, so I'm gonna mention it again.
That's what I was gonna say.
Where is it?
Oh, well, do you wanna say it?
No, that's.
It's okay.
What?
Well, I mean, if I don't say it, I'll antico. So, you know, there's been all this concern, especially with Highway 61, we've, you know, we've brought this up before, but on roads and safety, right, of biking and walking and all of this.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, but this road still reminds me of a fun speedway. Maybe not so much there by the school, but still. Now, not only might we have the assisted living there, but we're also now going to have a housing unit of high density with maybe young children, higher, maybe not, who's to say? And it, it concerns me that we're not, like, taking big picture about where we get these places planted. And, you know, granted, it's by a school, maybe that's handy. Certainly, an easy walk up to a school, that's all great, but it is sort of a major roadway.
It is a 30.
Which we've done on purpose, which is all great, so, I mean, I'm not here to say no to it, but it, it do kinda makes me wonder, like, are we thinking about these things from the bigger scale when we say yes to this? Or once again, here's a plot of land, I'll put whatever suits it on it, without trying to think how it fits together.
Well, the irony of that is that most of the land that we have that's available in the city are in, are in the zones that haven't been doing their jobs. So, so the land that we have available to develop has been in the commercial industrial zone and the R2 zone, which are the two zones that have been the least effective at fulfilling their missions. So, I mean, I do think that we have, that we have, we have enough of a justification to pursue developing those things. I get what you're saying, I mean, that is a major roadway, there, you know, hundreds of, hundreds of cars a day go up and down there. I also think that with all the other things that we're putting in place for traffic control and for, and for pedestrian safety, that, that, you know, we can implement some of those things in conjunction with the county and the Department of Transportation to make sure that that section there is as safe as it possibly can be. You know, GDS has been pushing to get, to get a sidewalk built on that side of, on their side of the highway, down to the path for, you know, for, for a long time. And, and I think that, you know, that, this could be another piece of that conversation. How do we put? How do we put safe crossings there? How do we make sure that people who live in that space are getting there safely? It could actually add positive inertia to that movement.
It might. I mean, I'm just bringing it up because we spend a lot of time and energy saying that's important in other places in our community. And all of a sudden, this feels really scattered to me, all this development. And then, we still have three lots, I mean, I guess Arrowhead's in there, maybe, or, I mean, Fine Finish. What was that?
And Arrowhead.
And Arrowhead. Fine Finish is just a little team.
So, that's commercial no matter what, but then he split you right down the middle, and what's going to go on either side? Not that we can know that, but it could end up being, you know, it might end up feeling really hodgepodge. That's all. I'm not here to say no to any of this.
And I think that's why it was raised at the planning commission that, you know, the larger parcel should be possibly considered for rezoning, too. I mean, to take the centerpiece out of an industrial piece and retain, I mean, it's still all one owner right now, and he's carved out a piece in the middle that said, he's willing and supportive of doing that, but he's also willing to sell it for commercial industrial if he has a buyer come along. So, but if he has a buyer for residential, I guess that they would be in here asking for rezoning to do that, too. So, but you're right, and we should be looking at the bigger picture, I think, with regard to this, because it's not, it's not a setting that, you know, we would want to be encouraging to have that kind of thing happening. And it is a spot zoning, and we have some rationale for it, but I think we've got some work to do, too.
So, if we were to rezone the whole thing, I mean, that goes beyond what they're asking, what the property owners are asking.
Yeah, nobody's asked the property owner their position on that, although one can imagine what it would be, kind of similar to what you said. I would like it to be zoned whatever the buyers would like it to be zoned, which is reasonable. I'd just say two things to what Tracy brought up. The Active Living Committee has been talking to the city and the county both about incorporating questions about pedestrian facilities into their applications like this. And so, for instance, when the apartment in Lutzen was being discussed by the county, and we all recognized that stretch of Highway 61 is a terrible place for pedestrians, and now we're going to put, and so, there's just an issue that, how do we make sure that the conversation occurs at least about that? And I think we're probably looking at some changes to our applications, just to raise the question, not to change any rules or put any requirements in place, but just to make sure that we ask that. The other thing I'd say is I think it's likely we're going to look at a lot of our CI-zoned property and ask ourselves whether it ought to be zoned residential instead, given the demand that we have right now in the community. And when we do that in a broader way, we should be very strategic about it. Where are the pedestrian facilities already? Where are the places that are likely to want to be zoned commercial at some point versus those that people that might want to be building housing could get the land and get to work on it right now? So...
Can you say one more thing? We looked for other land, and this wasn't our first choice to go through rezoning. There is a piece for sale in R2 that has cactiles growing on it, which is just below your assisted living facility. So, I mean, we tried, and I just don't think it's available. So, this was our best solution.
Yeah, my comments are just...
I understand where you're coming from.
Because sometimes, in a small town, it ends up being really patchy. And you're right, there's not like there's all that much land either, but you look around our community, we could have done a lot better, bigger picture planning.
Well, and I think that that's a really important viewpoint that we need to keep in mind when we're going through with all the comp plan feedback we get when we actually go in and look at the zoning itself, because, you know, we've got a big task ahead of ourselves for doing that. And, you know, maybe that does mean that the commercial industrial zone gets narrowed down, because maybe a smaller commercial industrial zone would make it more effective. But, you know, I don't know. We'll have to see when we get there.
Well, and I think when we talked about spectrum and potential locations for that, you know, and even this kind of thing, when a developer is interested in doing a project like this, but there's very limited property available that's on city sewer and water that would meet their criteria, points out the need for us to really look at that. And if we do want to try to encourage housing development, are we doing the best job we can? I mean, hopefully, the comp plan will help us move that process along.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Good for you guys.
Yeah. Okay, motion on the table is for the approval of ordinance, I want to make sure I get it, 2017-2.
So, this is the first reading. You'll have to do a second.
Yep.
Up to you.
So, any final comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. So, we will have a second reading in two weeks. And usually that will, you know, we'll be in touch. You can come back at that next meeting. All right, so the next thing we have on the agenda is a request from the chamber. I don't know if you guys have heard this or seen this. There's been letters in the paper and around on social media, et cetera. Do you want?
Should we switch it around? Is anybody here to talk about that?
No, they're all here for the North House thing.
I thought maybe that someone might come.
Should we switch it around? Or do we, what do you do?
Oh, you mean so they cannot sit through the whole meeting?
Yes.
Got it. Tracking now.
We talked about the J1 issue. I mean, I think we're definitely interested in that. If that could be helpful.
You're on camera. Well, I mean, have you guys had a chance to read through all this stuff? And do you understand what they're asking us to do? They're basically asking us to pass a resolution that says that we urge our Representative Rick Nolan and Senators Amy Klobuchar and Al Franken to use all means available to them, including legislation to protect the J1 visa program, because of certain threats that have been made to that program.
Yeah, I talked to Jim Boyd. He was unfortunately not able to make the meeting tonight. And, you know, I mean, I'm a strong advocate to support this. We've got hundreds of students in this community that work to support our businesses and probably even more businesses that use these resources that are totally dependent on making sure that they have enough employees to run their businesses. I mean, I just don't know many businesses that don't have the need for seasonal employees. And these students that come in to work are assets to the community. They work two to three jobs sometimes. You know, they've brought, you know, I think, a lot to the community. Communities embrace them. They've set up programs, programs like the Workers on Wheels Bike Share Program. Some of the churches have community dinners for the students. You know, some families, local families have taken students in to have, take them out to dinner, or have them over for dinner, or do other types of things. I mean, it's, I think, the places that employ students like this, you know, Cook County and Grand Marais offer, I think, a really, you know, unique experience. And we see a lot of our students that return, you know, year after year until they kind of exhaust the process and graduate from school or, you know, can't come back, you know, through the program. You know, Beth and I have been involved with hiring students for over 15 years, and, you know, I have to say, it's been an enjoyable thing to do. It's been important for our businesses, but I think it's also created, you know, friendships and, you know, I just can't think of anything but positive about this program, especially in our community. So, I mean, I would be a strong advocate for doing what we can to encourage our congressional delegation to support this effort and, you know, even if we need to do something beyond that, you know, to make sure that we support the continuation of this program.
Anyone else?
Our motion?
Well, I would make that motion, you know, if, you know, we're ready to do that.
Well, there's always an option for discussion as if a motion is...
Okay, then I will make the motion that we support the sending a letter to Representative Nolan, Senator Klobuchar, and Franken with regard to this issue.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sending a letter rather than passing the resolution model that Jim had included?
I'd like a letter better than a resolution.
Okay.
A unique individual...
Yeah, something that we compose that, you know, supports the concerns that we have for this program.
But that expresses...
It can be expressed those same things that are, you know, elaborated on in the resolution, but...
But instead of just a form...
I don't know. I think when you send an information letter to, you know, Senator Congressman...
And it's personalized. That's what you mean?
My preference would be to send a letter. We can talk about that.
We could do both, right?
We could do both, yeah.
Okay, so let's not get too confused here. What do we, so what's the motion actually stand for right now?
Now, what did I second?
Send a letter.
Send a letter to our delegation.
You just volunteered.
And deliver it, by the way.
I will certainly help writing it. I've talked with Amy and Rick. I haven't talked to Al. They didn't call me when they came to town. Hmm.
That's a whole other topic.
It's an opportunity.
It could be.
Touch base.
We're going to send Dave to talk to him. But I could certainly, you know, communicate with them this desire as a letter, you know, with the council's support. What?
I was just going to tease you, but I won't.
Well, everyone teases me, it's fine.
Next time Al calls in, I'll just say, hang on, let me get Jay on the phone.
No, 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 he doesn't want to talk to me. So, are we doing a resolution or are we just doing a letter? Resolution or a letter?
Well, I thought, I mean, I'm fine seconding a letter, but I thought a resolution would be a stronger statement, but maybe I'm wrong there. I don't know.
Well, he made the motion.
Yep, that's...
So, if he wants to change his motion, otherwise, we have to let it die, and then we can start another one.
Well, you could have proven it and then started another one, too.
Well, we could do that.
We could send a letter and a resolution.
Can we add it?
Are you modifying your, you modifying your motion now?
Oh, my God, we're stuck in the same things.
I'm trying to follow the rules.
Can I modify his...
You can't modify it. Here's a second.
You can ask him politely.
Could you please modify it?
We can vote on the letter. How about that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with sending a letter and a resolution. I would like to have a letter sent, because I just think it's more personal and, you know.
Well, the joint county, city, EDA approved a resolution, so that's going from that, which is a joint, Cook County, Grand Marais thing. So, if we did a letter versus basically writing the same resolution.
We support that resolution and here's why?
It looks a little bit like, hey, all we did is copy and paste our name instead of the EDA's name, instead of the county board's name. So, they'd get three that all look exactly the same. So, if somebody really wants to compose a letter, great.
Okay, so we've got a motion for a letter. Motion and a second for a letter on this topic. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Fantastic. We got that done. You guys are up. So, you're probably really glad that you sat through that.
This is a little...
Oh.
They're just going to sit in the back.
Yeah, you're on your own there.
That means that you can't talk, though. If you're not at the table, you're not supposed to talk. Oh!
Nice, come on up.
Somebody was going to come up with something.
Nice bait, you did.
Well, you had to. It's the way it's supposed to be.
Well, hi. I've been here before and enjoyed the journey. First, just in case maybe doesn't have plans for the weekend, Unplugged this weekend. The rumors are true. Saturday night's Planted Formal is sold out, and I think there's about 20 seats at 700 for a Saturday night show. So, exciting times, exciting to have an event like this become an important part of the community. It's such a key celebration. We've been together a lot of times, and we've covered a lot of ground values, alignment, service to local youth, engagement of local adults, challenges of fiscal realities of running any business in our small community, important stuff. One thing I've promised multiple times is an economic impact study. So, great to have Scott sitting here with me. This is the unveiling, I think, is that, would that be the correct term? First release was bound this morning, so if the pages are hot, there's a reason, they just literally came off from Northspan. Want to just talk briefly about it? I think I've shared a couple numbers. One, you're supposed to try one.
I will.
Okay. One number that's simple and easy to understand is $10 million. That's our estimate of our fiscal impact in this community. $10.6 million, pretty close to $11 million. And that's up from $6 million in 2008. So, North House is growing. That's good.
And that was for the calendar year 2016?
Yes, correct.
So, you're saying $10.6 million?
Correct.
That year?
That year. Correct. Now, Anton asked some great questions about, well, where, there's this one, how did that work? And I didn't really do a very good job of explaining it. So, let's go into the guts, basically, about how a report like this is pulled together.
What page?
Yeah, let's look at the page. The simplest way, if we're going to really go into the guts, is to go to page, and we'll see if Scott agrees with me. Page 10, Exhibit A.
Ooh. Sounds like quite a lot.
This is an incredibly well-organized report. So, North House went about in the beginning, the task of evaluating its economic impact by asking some simple questions. First question, how many students come to North House Folk School? Second question, how many of them come to the school but aren't local? Which is, the answer is approximately 90%, but actually 88.5%. And then, the next question is, and how many of them said, I am making this journey primarily because of North House Folk School? Now...
Either, sorry, nitpick, but it's good to be accurate. I think those numbers are flipped around, just based on lines C and D.
Ah, okay, okay, yep, okay, got it. Perfect.
I'm watching you.
I like that. So, it's important to note that therefore, our fiscal impact may be larger than the number we've already, because we're removing people, but we want to make sure we're taking credit where credit's due. So, the next piece, question is, okay, well, how many, how long did the average student stay? Because we're going to look at how many days that student is here. Then, the next question is, if those, that's the length of the days they are here for their class, did they stay any extra days, as many of them do? And now, were they traveling alone or with others? And the answer is often, they travel with others. Now, is that the only people who come to the school? No, there's people who teach. And do they come only for those days? And do they travel with others? Right? So, what we're doing is we're busily counting the number of days that North House is generating, and whether it's students, or instructors, or volunteers, or work-study visitors who come to participate, or special event participants like Unplugged, you start to add numbers. Now, North House since 2008 has grown...
From 21 to 31.
From 21, go ahead.
It's 21,000 in the previous study in 2007. Total visitor days here, right at the bottom, 31,670.
Okay, so next...
This is the same, just so people understand, this is the same methodology that was used in 2007. That's the simplest way for us to go at that. That's what we chose to do. Number is slightly different. Dave, if you look, for example, down on Roman III, 2007, student extended days was 2.48. That number stayed the same, but in Roman II, the actual student campus days dropped from 2.38 to 2.32. So, that's all tracking data coming from the student records that this guy provided me with.
And that basically says that the amount of per stay that people stayed on campus when they were taking classes went down .06.
That's correct. Right. And it's kind of in alignment with, we've seen some of our most extended classes like kayak building or pram building diminishing, especially as the economy suffered.
Right.
And we're actually seeing a resurgence now, but, yeah, so that's...
And that would probably reflect that more and more...
And that would probably reflect that more, more single-day courses or shorter courses too, or...
Weekend courses.
Yeah, although I would say I see a trend towards more like, the core is really, North House is two to four days, that's really where the core is.
Okay.
So...
Of our coursework.
So are you concerned, are you concerned at all that there's been a decline in that?
No, I, no. I would see that we're tending back into the, I think we're moving towards three to five days being more of a course norm, but our program committee is in the busy of, in the thick of kind of looking at kind of those trends and where we need to move as an organization, but you ask exactly the questions we're curious about internally.
If you go to page one, the thing, the dramatic metric for me, and you'll see it in Table A, if you take the number of visiting students, the number of visiting students in 2016 was 2,001, and in 2007 it was 1,103. That's 81% growth in 10 years.
So just for two seconds, just so I track this, right, if anyone asks me, so when you say extended stay and it's 2.48, do you just mean that's like the total altogether than they stay, or they say 2.48 days on top of their class?
They're on campus for 2.3 and they're here in town for another 2.4.
Okay, so another .10 is the total of their stay than if...
4.8.
Oh, okay, so I do add those two together. That's what I was trying to get at.
And this weekend would be a great example, there's students who are in Nicholas Carlson's class, are they staying for Unplugged? Right? Yes.
Okay.
So...
And I would agree with that, I mean, that it seems like students show up a day early for their classes, so they can be there, you know, early enough to register and blah, blah, blah. Classes get done at 5:00, they stay the night after as well. So that would substantiate that claim that they stay for, you know, two, two and a half days after.
Okay, I just didn't want to actually understood it represented.
And can you explain a little bit about the student group stays? I'm not quite sure I understand what that means.
Yes, when Tim Kennedy comes up here from Forest Lake, he has 1.11 people with him. Same number as was done in 2007.
So in the group with the student are additional people, and they might not be in class. Actually, maybe that's to Grand Marais' advantage, that they're out shopping in the galleries, eating in the restaurants, hiking the trails, fishing the waters.
So that 9,900 number for 2016, what does that represent?
Does that represent the extra, like, extra people that have come to town because people are taking classes?
In 4B?
Okay, so that's 99, 26 student days times the 1.11 additional people who are with them, right?
And that's the student campus days plus the student extended stay.
Okay, so that's a combination?
Yes.
And multiplied by those factors?
Correct.
Okay.
These guys are digging in here, Mayor. Well, this is what we like to see.
We do this every meeting, so that's why.
Absolutely. So, and you'll note, the Yordas, for instance, is not on here, not because the Yordas isn't an important asset for our community, for North House, but we just can't claim those user days as our own.
It doesn't meet the primary purpose, does it?
Correct, yeah.
I like that 6G, the instructor party days, you know, they probably had a lot of party subs down there, Dave.
I'm not the party sub guy.
Just to correct for the record, this is people in the party with the instructor, I'm sorry. Mr. Kennedy, disappoint you.
Oh, that is disappointing.
It is, it is. I thought that they...
That's a lot of party days.
Okay, so if you...
Your instructors got into the swing of things.
So as, so if we look at the bottom of column, the 2007 column, 11, hold on. So bottom right corner, 31,670 student days. Now, the next task is to move that into a fiscal dimension. Anton?
So special events, that's like Unplugged and...
Correct.
And like the Wood and Boat Show.
Wooden Boat Show or Winners Gathering. We really think of three special event as...
So I'm assuming when you do special events that you have, like, you know, so 700 people can fit in the tent, and you got two days of music, right? So there's 1,400 people.
Okay, so the answer is...
I mean, I'm just wondering, so if those people are also staying around for an extra couple days...
So if you look at, Anton, if you look at page 13, Exhibit D, so we certainly host multiple special events at North House, Unplugged, the Wooden Boat Show, Winners Gathering, but there are different durations and they're different sizes. So this breaks down participation and shows you the actual participation, our analysis of local versus non-resident, and this is harder for us to substantiate. It's actually, you know, a staff evaluation of percentage, we don't have zip codes like we do for a student, right? So Winners Gathering, we know has a higher local engagement than some other, right? So that's, so then we transpose those into visitor days, because some experiences are longer, some are shorter. So that's where that 67...
The Boot Show's 2.0, for example, 2.4 days per visitor. Unplugged is about 1.5.
Sure. That's all I was, I guess what my question was then is, if your number, Roman III, is student extended stay, like you said in your example, like, well, if they're taking a class right now, they're gonna stay a couple more days, do you get to use that number up here for extending for a couple days? And then they also get to be counted into, into the special event number?
No, they're in Roman VII. The number that you're looking at on page 13 is Roman VII, separate from the others.
But he's asking is, is there a delta accounting for people who stay extra for the Boat Show? And then, so that's what you're asking?
I just, yeah, I mean, I just, you said that, and so I was like...
Maybe it was a poor example.
Well, yeah, I don't think, my belief is, it is far, is, many students stay extra days regardless of if there's a special event or not. I don't think that's the primary driver of the extra day statistic. It was a poor example.
Right.
But it's, you ask an important nuance...
So you're trying to ferret out whether or not there's a lot of overlap in the categories?
Well, not necessarily a lot, I mean, just, you know, because...
That's what he's asking, and I think the answer was no, and that was a poor example.
Right. But I think you ask, again, great, because we don't spend every day...
That's probably yes, but I don't think it matters. I mean, the whole point of this is, to get not really gonna be changed dramatically by trying to delve into it, you know, the methodology of that.
We're just trying to understand.
Overall, the voting records looked good.
Right, okay.
Well, it is absolutely clear that the number of visiting students was up 81%. That's the most important metric.
And that you can, and that you're certain of because you have the records of the classroom days and the registrations for classes. So, yes.
And that far exceeded the growth in special events, which we highlight elsewhere in the report. So we now go to Exhibit B. Now, the idea is to monetize, and rather than saying exactly what, this is where the study statistics and working with an organization that has data about, so we took our normal per visitor day spending that we used in 2006, we applied the CPI and increased those to current, you know, to 216 spending, and applied those numbers to our user days as a way of calculating the direct economic impact of our students that are staying and using overnight facilities. And then, we have others that don't use overnight, so that's that second number, and then also integrating North House's spending, right? Because that runs parallel to the students' spending out in the community. Yep. And we subtract, we subtract depreciation, because we obviously can't take that as a hard expense, and similarly, we subtract out compensation to instructors who don't work here, because those dollars...
That do work here.
Oh, they do work.
Non-local.
Non-local.
Ah.
Yeah, because...
Right, because we can't, those dollars leave, those dollars, right? We already captured them as, because they're travelers, right?
Yep.
So, right? And so you total all these things up, you get the direct impact of $6,869,000, and then you apply a multiplier factor of those dollars reaching out into the community and creating additional, generating additional, and that's 1.55 is kind of the metric that you usually apply, and that's the same number we used last time, right? And so that's how you take the direct impact, the induced impact, you add them together, and you get $10,000.
$10 million.
$10 million, thank you, there's a big difference. So, and this is where then, just to confirm, because Anton, this is something we discussed. So does somebody who spends $1 go out and spend $17 on tuition, go out and spend $18, $17, $18 in the community? And the simple answer is no. The point is, when $1 is spent at North House on coursework, there are 17, 18 other dollars that work out in our community, generating activity for other local businesses, for people who work here, like at North House, at the Rec Park, et cetera. So it isn't a one-to-one, but it's basically aligned this number, the $10 million, with the spending back in the classroom, which again is what most people think, that's, they think that's North House's business. So it helps you understand our classroom reality and the fiscal impact.
Just for those of you that are digging in, take the $10 million six and turn to page 25, so you are sure what the number is. Take the total economic impact, the $10 million six, and you divide it by 595,000, which is the total income earned by programs, program services. If you divide those two numbers, it's $18 for every dollar that North House generates by selling their programs. That's where the number comes from.
So in 2006, when you guys came up with the per visitor day spending, how did you, how did you calculate those numbers?
We didn't. The state of Minnesota did that, and they spent a lot of money on that study.
Right.
Those numbers are all from the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, so we just took those, their numbers, rolled them forward.
Which, I'm sorry, which number?
The visitor per day spending, lodging, food.
Okay.
So Exhibit D.
And then I was gonna ask about that metric, is that just like, kind of the standard, like the state sort of thing, the 1.55?
It is.
Yeah, that's just like, when you do economic impact studies, that's the number you use. And is that, and maybe this is digging in too deep and it's maybe not relevant, but is that varied by region at all? Or is it a national?
It does, and it depends on the amount of manufacturing and where the suppliers of the manufacturing come from. Good question, perhaps the answer.
Okay. There is one other really important exhibit to share, and that's Exhibit C, of course, A, B, and C. And this looks at comparative seasonality. In other words, when is North House busy and when is our tourism community busy? You can see, if we look over to the right under Grand Marais and Seasonality Index, then under the months July, August, and September, or June, July, August, and September, the vast majority of the tourism economy takes place. And if we look to the left, and we look at the Seasonality Index of North House Student Days, we see that actually, North House, North House's alignment is dramatically different. This is good for North House, in the sense of our students need lodging, they're consumables they need, they don't want to be competing with other visitors to the North Shore with, but similarly, this is good, because if you're a provider of food, of lodging, beverages, shopping opportunities, these people come and generate business in other seasons of the year for your local business. So our dollars, these $18, aren't just drivers in the core tourism season, but they're drivers year-round. And that's one of the reasons North House, you know, is, and Grand Marais work well together. So...
So what it says here is that for eight months of the year, the Seasonality Index of North House is greater than the local lodging revenues for those months.
It's not competing for a scarce resource.
Right. So eight months of the year, it exceeds that number.
Correct. Yep.
So it's adding something to what would be otherwise a lesser lodging activity.
Right.
And this, these two indexes add up to 100%, is that...
I believe that's the case.
One is 1.1.
Okay, yeah. So that, yeah, and that's just more evenly distributed too with the Folk Schools index.
Important to understand.
And definitely, the shoulder season, quote unquote, that's actually where North House is witnessing its greatest and fastest growth right now. And that's definitely a trend in the past seven years. That, there's no question about that trend. Okay, so my goal in sharing this was to deliver as promised. You know, the first hot engagement, our goal is, we have a community engagement work group that in the next month is gonna be, month and a half, gonna be out engaging the community, sharing this, talking about it, because this matters, and we want to understand, you know, how people's perceptions of how we fit and how we think we fit, how those align. So, but that's, I know we had a great conversation last week, there's still more conversation to have, I think I'll hand the ball off to you guys to clarify what happens next.
Well, does anybody have any more questions for Greg regarding the economic impact study? I know that Anton, you had some questions about the way the numbers were calculated. Do you feel like you understand it at least well enough to use this as a tool?
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, yes.
Anybody else have any questions about...
This guy has an amazing ability to make me understand these things I don't understand.
Well said.
That's dangerous.
It's true.
Okay, so, so keep this, use this as a tool, and then we can transition the conversation. So you all received...
I was just gonna say, thank you for digging in with us there, going through it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I don't know, he's already sat down. So we have, we have sent out as part of your packet a bullet-pointed list of, this is basically a summary of our discussion from last, from last week. This summary is basically intended to identify the high points of that conversation, meaning things that we all agreed on, like that we had already existing consensus on, and concerns that were brought up in discussion about the North House lease conversation. I have, I'm interested in what your thoughts are in regards to ways to move forward on this. I've been doing a lot of thinking on this in the last, in the last few days, and I would like to propose a couple of ideas, because it seems like going through these bullet points that there are certain things that we need to address in order to feel at ease with moving forward with some kind of a different arrangement, but we have other options on the table as well. Greg himself communicated that the current arrangement with the existing 12, 13 years on the lease, plus the 25 years automatic renewal, is fine. Not ideal, but fine. And so that would be option one. Option two would be that the council acknowledges that the purposes for which the initial lease was established have been accomplished by North House, and that North House's vibrancy in the community is secure, and thus the terms of that existing lease are not, have been fulfilled, and thus it's time for the city to engage in a different, a different agreement with North House. That could be for a longer period of time, it could be for, for a similar time to what they already have in a lease agreement, but that would then be an opportunity for us to redraft an agreement with North House, to change slightly or, you know, or install some things into the lease. some things into the lease that would address some of the concerns of the community, as well as, as well as engage potential changes in what North House can contribute to the community into the lease. One of the things that I thought of was, is having some mechanism that would, that would automatically increase the lease value after a certain amount of years, which would then reflect change in cost of living, of those sorts of things. That, of course, would have to be agreed upon by the council and North House leadership, but that I believe would, and Tracy, you can weigh in to see what you, what you think about this, but I'm only on number two of three, if you think that, if you think that that would address the concerns that the community has regarding the lease agreement with North House. The third one is that we acknowledge that North House has, has met the criteria that was set up in the lease, and we just give them the 37 years on the same lease. So, those, so those are, those are, those are thoughts that I have. Of course, there's a lot of wiggle room in all those different thoughts, and perhaps we can throw all three of those out and work on something else. But I do think that, you know, as shown in this, in this memo here, there is a lot of things that we agree on already, as far as the impact of, of North House into, in the community and the potential future impact. And I believe that drafting, or at least agreeing to draft a new lease with certain criteria, would be a really smart thing for us to do at the present time, to, to ensure that, that relationship stays vibrant, and that we can continue to, to grow together as a community with the, the vision and values that we've identified as part of the comp plan. So, that's a lot of talking, and now I'm interested in what you guys think. So, maybe you, Tracy, if you have comments about those ideas, or any part of them, rip it to shreds, go. I didn't just say that to you, I said that to everybody, because that seems like the direction things go.
Yeah, I can, I can sense this. Dave, did you want to?
I had a hard time gleaning anything from the three of us. I have a lot of words, and I honestly had a hard time leaning substance.
So, can I summarize, because Jay and I talked briefly, is that okay?
That's fine.
So, I think Jay's first thought is, the status quo is okay.
Yep.
Done.
Yep.
Second idea is, just give North House its second 25 years now. So, it's 37 years, same terms, in theory, we're just forecasting what's probably going to happen, our lease will automatically renew, and we just do it now. That's kind of a gift, because that's a third of a century, that's incredible.
And then the third one was?
Third idea would be, longer term, some evolution in the lease language, because we know we need to come into present day, and some evolution in the fiscal description of what the partnership looks like, because there's some ideas coming from the community about that, and, and, you know, we would like to, and while North House's primary role, I think, is to create vitality, as an educational nonprofit, we're not here to generate property tax, we're here to create, become an asset this community is invested in and committed to, and, yeah, it really serves the good of the community, but we get it, fiscal things matter. And so, there's some kind of evolution in the fiscal reality of our relationship, in a modest way, that represents that symbolic moving forward. So, that's his third idea. I hope I got that. Did I get it kind of right?
I should have just had him say it the first time.
So...
No, I did glean it all, I just...
There just wasn't that much there.
Test it, always test it.
Fair enough.
You know, I, I mean, I like the fact that, you know, there's been this conversation, and I think that this, this partnership is really important, you know, the city is, is the property owner, you know, North House is the user of that property, the relationship that exists there has been important, and it's obvious, been pointed out in this economic study, the value that this creates. One of the things that I liked, when you were here at the last meeting, was the conversation we were having about the future capital investment, and tying a new lease into some kind of conversation about that level of capital investment, you know. It's one of the things that I think that might help offset some of the concerns that people in the community have raised about the type of lease that we currently have, and, you know, while I said at the last meeting, I could go either way with terms of a lease, in terms of the monetary value to the, to the city, I think the perception in the community is that, by some is that, that North House just doesn't pay the fair share, and I think there needs to be a better way to, to represent that, you know, value, rather than just the economic study alone. And, you know, I was intrigued by your, your idea of a commitment to future capital investment, because that, because that's certainly of value, and it's, it's something tangible that, that I think I would, I would like to have a greater conversation about.
And that's something that could definitely be included in the drafting of a new, of a new agreement, so...
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that, that kind of, I thought that was like a great way to end that conversation that we had with that idea. I mean, I think that's a, you know, I mean, this is, it's fabulous, I mean, the amount of time and effort and the figures, you know, and, but obviously, we kind of like digging into some of that stuff, and, you know.
You should.
But it's the, it's the, the idea of, yeah, like Tim said, the capital investment, that is apparent to everybody, that isn't going to necessarily feed through that, but it's like, this is the impact, right? Not just to business owners because of dollars spent in their businesses, which those people understand the impact and what a, you know, important asset the North House is, but, so... I think it's, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's worth looking at a longer-term lease. I mean, that's what I would say, looking at a longer-term lease and figuring out what, you know, is it $10 million over the next, whatever, there was some number that you put out there.
2.4 over the next 10?
I just said 10 million.
10 million cents.
Another wrong number.
We'll give you more time.
Weren't we talking 50 years?
Okay, so, if you might turn to page eight. Why don't you go ahead and just say what you think you should be saying?
In terms of impact on the community, forget about the 18, the 1, we know that, and I think you'll understand it, but take a minute to read number six, because that's investment of programming dollars and administrative support and teachers that get reinvested here to our citizens, our kids, at no cost.
And then if you slip to page nine and look at number seven, this highlights the fact that, in this economic study, in no way do we incorporate the fact that the school's already invested about $1.3 million in the past 10 years, advancing its programmatic mission by investing in the capital assets, and that the return is clear. I mean, that same investment, that same period, is when we've seen the shoulder season growth that is really now the driver of the school, and an asset for this community.
But back to Tim's concept of tying something to capital investment, it's specifically called out here, not included in the 10.6 million separately, because the 10.6 is all spending dollars, not investment dollars.
And I think what you, at least that, my understanding of what you were talking about, Greg, at the last meeting, was that future investment going forward, that there's going to be, and I can't remember even the dollar amount, if you even threw out a dollar amount number.
2.4 million.
Yeah, I suggested that one way to coach this would be to say...
24 million?
Twenty, yeah, no. What to be, say, in the first 20 years, one could count, if you, if you were fascinated by the subject of property tax for some strange reason, one estimate of North House's property tax in the first 20 years would be about $625,000. Well, let's multiply that times four. Why? Because it's more than one, times one, and say, here's the number, $2.4 million, North House needs to invest that in the next 10 years to secure the 50-year lease, or the 55-year lease, or whatever it is. And if we don't, it just goes back to 25 years, that was our agreement. So, that's just a model, and I'm, I'm pretty confident the board would be intrigued by that challenge, and I would note, and this is important, it doesn't really matter whether North House is just intrigued with the challenge, the point is, are the partners for this endeavor also intrigued? And I mean, it's kind of like the city throwing a card down and saying, listen, we're in. Are you in or not?
Well, and that's, and that's not to catch you off, but I did.
No, totally, Jay.
But that's exactly what the city did with the first lease. Like, that is exactly the precedent that was created with the first lease, was like, okay, North House, like, you're, you're talking a big game, let's make it happen. Like, I don't, I don't see anything wrong, and actually, I kind of like the idea, like, I'm with you guys, that, that this lease should challenge North House.
But also should challenge our partners and our funders, or call out to them, but yes.
Depends on the type of challenge you want to see.
And those opportunities will be easier presented to them if we have a 50-year lease.
Absolutely.
Or, you know, so those, those things, it helps line all that up, right? I mean, if we have to wait for the renewal, and then the extension, or whatever, automatically, I mean, if we just say, all right, we do 50 years, I mean, that's...
I don't want to have to stick around that long.
You better. Anyway, so we haven't heard from a couple of counselors here, I don't know if you guys have things you want to say, if you have concerns or, or comments that you'd like to make, I'm sure there are lots of comments. But, what? Still thinking?
I'm, I, I don't have anything that I need to say right now.
He's leaving that open.
You get that on tape?
Well, yeah, because he's going to interfere.
He's going to interrupt one.
After, yeah, after one's gone and left, after, even you guys have gone, I'm like, I'll still be sitting here thinking, and then it'll come to me.
We just need the camera on.
Tracy, do you, what are your thoughts? I know you have thoughts, I know you, I know that you're ready to say.
No, I'm busy envisioning him sitting here. So, yeah, I mean, I keep thinking too, and, and for me, I'd need to sit and read your report, and, and the whole verbal thing doesn't click with me right away, so I will sit and read it. And you know that I've said this is a great thing to do, and asked you just a while ago, it's just not like, it just, whatever, because I think it's really important. And I think we're all past the whole thing, like, this is not about like or not like North House, or what value do, yeah, that's obvious. I mean, even if you never presented this today, I think it's evident to everybody, the value and how much you're part of our community now, and our community's identity. But that said, we are all in this together. It's not just North House, it's not just the art colony, it's all the businesses, we all make up this community, and because of, almost literally where we're located, we really have to be together on everything if we're going to succeed. And it's not just one of us that outshines the others to who we are. And the lake is probably the biggest thing that makes all of this possible for any of us. If we were in, hate to offend anybody, but if we were in the middle of Arkansas, Nebraska, I just don't think this would work, okay? I mean, I'm stating the obvious, but to me, it brings up two things. First of all, the lake is so important, and we have to protect that, and it should be public for everybody, and that's one of the things that you guys add great value for us by doing that with that property, and you've been fantastic at it, and it's, but it's so important, and the second part is, we can't say one, one of us is any more important than the other, really, when we think about it. We all together make this place what it is, right down to the people who live here. So, I never want to say that somehow we made this decision just because one, North House is so wonderful, because you're always making that argument, and that pushes somebody else down to make it, and it's not really the point anyways. And the second part is, I think the city has shown historically, from day one, great support, just from the concept, who knew what this would come or not, right? And the city backed you 100%, and they did it by giving you a lease that was certainly affordable and didn't, you know, push you back and allow, you know, push down your growth. But now I think you're to the point where you are a pretty darn successful, sophisticated, not saying anything new here, nonprofit, and you've had great success with it, and now you've had wonderful opportunities that I would equate a lot of business owners' community would love to be able to do. You've increased your internships, you've given them wonderful housing opportunities in the community, you've been able to expand a lot of your programs. I can think of a lot of businesses in the community have a lot of things they'd like to do too, but, you know, it isn't always feasible. So, you know, you, you get at your money from different directions in different ways, and you certainly help business owners bring in money, but I think it's time now to consider a lease that probably more reflects a true lease, reflects the fact that you are sitting on prime property, and respects the fact that the rest of this community has day-in and day-out expenses too. And one of them, which you kind of brought up the other week, is, you know, the main core of why we all sit here, and the city's responsibility is to provide the water, the electric, the streets, the protection, fire, police, whatever, that's our main reason to be here. We can go talk to viscount of counting if we want to market the community, but that's our primary thing. And then I open up that vision or comp plan thing, and the first thing I get thrown at me is the stats that says Grand Marais had no growth. You sit and tell me the growth you've had, and I have to look at the city and Grand Marais and say, our population is stagnant, and then a lot of our population is older, but we see all those core functions we're supposed to provide increasing, getting more complex, we've got increased water, you know, things we're supposed to meet right now, and we haven't had that kind of growth that you've had either. You know, people complaining to me about how much it costs for water here, but I say, look, there's only so many people that live here, but there's a base cost to all these systems, and, you know, we haven't seen our population go, and it would take a huge amount to really make a huge dent in it anyways. But somehow, I think it's time to recognize that by all of us and say that, you know, we have to stand up, you know, you do a great job of talking about North House, and look at all the people that are sitting behind you that are there to support you. But right now, I sit here with my city council head, and I have to think about all the other people who live here, and I think it's time that our lease was just a little bit more reasonable. That's all. And it's certainly not an effort that I want to, like, dampen your ability to keep continued success, and I don't expect you or have any contemplation that this is something where you're going to solve our city problems, or anything of that nature, but somewhere, I think we've got to act as a group and see each other's sides and recognize that.
So, what do you think about the concept of having a, you know, like an automatic cost of trust?
I thought that was already in there. But what I'm saying, yeah, but what I'm saying is, there should be an increase, now whether that's something we work over time, so you can work into your budget, and you were, I mean, I was to the end of the year, and I'm sure you've got a budget worked out for next year, but yeah, somewhere, and we may be doing it over time, whatever, but something that's a little bit more than what it is now, and that's kind of how I view it.
And that's financial contribution you're talking about.
Yeah.
So, so where does, I mean, like, number six and number seven on, on page eight, where they're talking about the, I think Greg said that the value of the, of the youth activities that were, you know, donated was at roughly $50,000 per year, and then the, the discounts on tuition for local residents are significant, what is it, like?
25%.
25%.
Oh, all those things are great, and I think they've been a good amount.
So, where does that fit into the value calculation though? Because...
I don't.
They don't? They don't fit in there?
No.
So, you're just looking for money, like, with it?
Well, I, I mean, the art colony does the same thing. I mean, I think North House has done, you said some great examples about this, I think you've done a great job with it, don't get me wrong, and I told you how valuable I think that is to a lot of students in our community, because they do. But, yeah, I, I'm just saying a blank at least, without these, of some increase. And I don't dismiss this, but I don't put that into the equation, but that's what you just asked me.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the value statement is there.
Yeah. No, these are really important, and I told Greg that, just how much I think it is to local students, and being a person who grew up here.
Yeah. Scott did want to point out one additional number.
If you turn to page 25, I want to be sure that we distinguish between the incredible economic impact that this institution has, and its ability to make money. Just to reinforce, take a look at the bottom of 25, page 25. This entity does not make money, it has to raise 40 to 50% of its money in grant forms or members' support every year to survive. So, if you look at last year, for example, there's this last year's audit, they lost 10,000 bucks. There is no excess working capital there, and in my mind, it's unlikely that that's ever going to be significant. In terms of power impacting the economic impact, that's huge, and it's grown four times the rate of the CPI over the 10 years. Don't think that there's any capital... Don't think that there's any capital available.
No, I'm not suggesting, and I don't want you to give me the thought, give you, that I somehow think there's this little pot of money that somehow we, that's not my point. But you aren't any different than anyone else when the time comes and how much money is there to spend, if you have to work it in, and then how, you know, you have, affects your programs. It's kind of the painful thing the county's going through right now, or any other business. And no, I, I don't view it that somehow, wow, we can tap into some, I never did.
So, so the, is it okay for me to keep talking?
Yeah, you can.
So the question kind of is, I think, is, is there, you know, North House, I'll start over. So a couple, maybe a year and a half ago, Anton asked, you know, don't you want to just buy the property? And I said, no. I'd much rather have a long-term lease and be able to invest that million dollars in the future of the school. I think that's the right thing for Grand Marais. And I still stand by those words. And that said, it means we need to be willing to wade into some gray area about what does this partnership look like. Right? And, and we're content now. I mean, we can, there's a way forward, and there's, this is a poetic and very pragmatic time to call and look for it, and to, yeah, and to, and so, and that's, I think, what Jay is really asking. Is there, do we have enough of a shared sense of direction that we want to call that out right now and say, between this idea of capital investment and some modest evolution, that there's a way forward and we should get to work on that?
And I, and I believe, if I'm summarizing correctly, that, that, you know, for all, when all of you guys have said, like, I, I mean, you have still haven't said anything.
Well, tonight, I've certainly said plenty before, but...
It's true. But, but what I'm getting from, from, from the council is that, that pursuing a new lease arrangement would be beneficial to the city.
I think it's kind of necessary, right? I mean, we just at least have to clean up the weeds.
I think it's beneficial to North House, too.
Well, I think, and if it's beneficial to the city and to North House, then it seems like this is, that's kind of the tack we should take on it, right?
Oh, I see, you mean, as opposed to...
Right. And, and we're, and we're seeing, you know, some, some concepts come forward that, that we'd like to see involved in this lease, you know, the, the capital investment thing, we've got some strong, strong support for that, an evolution of, of what the, what the lease terms themselves are, and, and, you know, continuing to acknowledge the, the economic impact that, that North House is making to the community, and to try and, and encourage that to continue to grow, as well as the investment that North House has been putting in the youth of the community. Like, those are four really solid points that, that I think would not be hard for North House to accommodate, and I think that those things would be, would be incredibly beneficial to the city. I would be, I would be willing and interested in, in making, making a statement or making a motion to, to, to start working on a lease that incorporated those things for the term of, you know, what, North House is 20? So then if we, if we, we have, we, the, the number 50 has got, has thrown out there and gets you to 70 years, then, then why not go 55 and make it to, even 75? You know, like, I mean, like, that would, if we've got those things, if we can all agree that those things need to be part of a lease, a lease agreement, and that we want to make sure that this, that this lease is flexible for the city, and that it, and that it provides what, what the community needs throughout the perceived growth of, of North House, then, then I think, I feel really comfortable making this, you know, making a statement like that, making a motion like that. So, should I make that motion, and then we can have discussion about that? Or do you want to, or do you want to have discussion before I make that motion?
Well, the only thing that I wanted to ask right now is, I mean, we've talked about potential capital investment from the folk school, we've talked about the length of the lease. We haven't gotten anywhere with specifics as far as the lease amount, and I feel like that's something we need to address directly for this conversation to continue. And so I don't know what modest means, I don't know, you know...
And I think that's something we'd have to ferret out, like, it would take some time to figure out what that means.
No time like the present.
I was gonna say, now, if we have the capital number and we have a lease number, why can't we have that number right now?
That's a good question.
Because for me, I mean, what, what I said in our special meeting was that, you know, most cities would be begging for them to come to town, and we're kind of trying to figure out how we can get a little bit more money out of them, and it's like, well, whatever. The money they're generating is so incredible, and the impact on the community, it's, I mean, it's just like, I mean, double, double the current thing, or what, what is modest? Because doubling isn't modest.
Well, and see, and I had a...
But it's, and, but when you're talking about how little the amount of money is in the lease, maybe that is modest, or...
It's a percentage versus an actual dollar amount.
Right.
It can sound much bigger than the other one really is.
So what is going to make you feel comfortable?
Well, I can, I mean, if you have a thought, you can say it.
No, but...
But I actually, I've put some thought into this.
And he raised his hand.
Yeah.
Which is funny, because I don't know what...
You're running the media.
And he is the mayor.
So, so an idea that came, that came to me, to me was that we would, you know, there are certain multipliers that can get, that can go into this, because right now, North House pays 4,000 bucks about? Something like that?
Annual?
Annual, which is the, which is the, you know, the original unimproved property value tax of that, of that property. So, so I was thinking, like, if we make a longer-term lease, then why don't we just set a set, a set percentage increase from year to year? Because if it's a longer-term lease, then that, that exponential, you know, increase on the, on that amount will be something that North House can, can swallow, and something that by the time we get to the later, the later years of this, of this lease, then, then it'll, it'll, it'll get to a point where it's, where it's, it's contributing back, you know, a, a certain amount of finance. And then we, you know, even we could probably put a cap on it at some point, too, for what we think is reasonable. Because, you know, exponential growth is something that can get, you know, can go crazy. So that would, that would be one of the ways that I see this working, would be, like, if we set, like, say, a 2% a year increase on it or something like that, and I'm just throwing numbers out, and we can, you know, whatever.
So start, we're going to start with its current lease of $4,000 and add 2% every year?
I don't think that we can increase it too much right away, because...
Well, that's what I'm asking, because it sounds like that's the largest concern at this point, but I could be wrong.
I mean, that's an idea.
You've described the existing terms of the lease pretty accurately.
We increase 2% a year right now.
Oh, you do?
So, so I've heard Tracy saying, though, is she believes that there should be a larger monetary contribution, which is above beyond that $4,000. And I don't know if you've given any thought to what that dollar amount would be that, you know, make it appropriate or attractive to the city, you know, as part of our partnership arrangement. You know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm still reluctant to, to go that route, just because I feel like the, maybe the issue of capital investment is a, is a, is a better way to see a return on our investment, our investment in this partnership. You know, getting, getting five or $10,000 more in lease revenue, to me, isn't as valuable as seeing sizable investment in the community in the term of capital, in capital investment, which I think goes a lot further. It's something that's recognizable by people that drive down the street. You see, you know, facilities, you know, improvements, things that, you know, that have, have some, some significant value. I just think that we need to be careful about, you know, how we, we structure this. I mean, I agree with you, Jay, that, that we should be talking about this, and if we're together that, that, and see the value to, to readjusting this, then we should try to figure out these terms that, that are acceptable. And, you know, it, it might take us a while to get to that. I mean, I'm doubtful we're going to get there tonight, but, but I, but I do think that, that you're on the right track.
Well, and I, I think that what we can do tonight is we can, is we can commit to working on a specific concept. Because I, I think that part of where we've been, part of where we've been, we've been getting, where we've been getting sidetracked is that we, we're not, we haven't, until tonight, had, had, you know, agreement on what we should be pursuing with this. And I feel like tonight, we came through with, yeah, we need to write something else, and it, you know, it can be a longer, a longer lease, as long as it, as long as it has the cri, meets the criteria to, to make it, you know, to make it worth it. So if we're there, if we're at that point, then I think that we can make that statement, and we can say, alright, we're going to start working on, we're going to start working on a longer lease with North House, and these are the things we're going to work out over the course of, you know, the next several months, and then we, or, or, you know, maybe not even that.
You know, that feels a lot like where we left off last week, and so we started doing that, and quickly realized that that's not possible without adding some detail to some of the points that you're asking. And really, in particular, the, the question you asked, and two of you have asked Tracy directly that question, and I don't think she's had a chance to answer yet.
So, so you're saying that that's the piece, that's the piece that we're missing?
That is a, is absolutely critical piece. If you're gonna, any of you are going to participate in negotiating with the terms that this lease ought to be, if you don't have a number in mind, then you're not going to be successful. So you have to have that number.
Jay, just one more, one comment in, in support of what Tim was going at. You know, this, the number of visitors come to campus to generate 10.6 million dollars of economic impact grew 81%. That is not possible without capital investment dollars on that campus, can't continue to grow. So that is the most significant thing. And as a potential grantor, when he goes trying to raise money, and you don't have a long-term lease to pay back 2.5 million dollars of capital investment, it's not a positive. But you can't continue to grow without capital investment. That's the most important thing that you could help in with right now.
You know, one question I had, and this maybe, Chris, you can address this, you know, we had some conversation at our last meeting, just about the, the, just the whole issue of, of economic return and the type of deal that we've given North House in the past. And there seemed to be some question about the legality or how that was structured, and do you have any comments or thoughts on, on what our conversation has been here and the direction we're going?
Well, I've taken a look at the lease, and, you know, my, I guess my comments aren't a, a value judgment in any way, I'm looking at it from a, just strictly legal perspective. There, there are some deficiencies in the lease that if you are going to look at, you know, extending the timeframe or the term of the, of the agreement that you should be looking at, the value of the rent would be one of them. You know, typically, you want to look at a rent amount that is somewhat correlated to market value, and, you know, the issue with market value in terms of how that's calculated, there would be a lot of factors that could go into that. You know, I've looked at lease, or structured leases for similar types of ventures in the past, where there's been in-kind, there's been capital investment, you know, into the property, and that was used to offset the value of rent amounts. You know, some entities look at the concept of payment in lieu of taxes as a means of, you know, looking at, trying to, you know, calculate what is some approximation of, you know, market value rent. So that would be, I guess, my comment on that. Like I said, there are other issues, you know, with the lease document itself, that, you know, if you're going to do this, the city should really be looking at, you know, some basic ones would be the insurance indemnification provisions should be spelled out better. There's a right of refusal, right of first refusal contained in the document that is wholly inadequate and should be, should be spelled out better. There's, uh, uh, language in there about access to the beach, which is not well-done and should be corrected, and really should be formed into a, a license type of an agreement, like you have with other licensures for use of the public beach. You know, so there's lots of, there's lots of things like that that should be, should be addressed in the lease as well, if, if you're going to look at making other changes or extending the term.
And so Chris has actually provided those comments, and he's gone through and done a markup that I have. And I don't think that we're quite at the point of it being a worthwhile conversation to really talk about a lot of those things without understanding some of the basic terms of the lease. And so that's why we described it as just really bringing the language up to current legal best practices. And I don't want to minimize that, because I think I mentioned right away that some of them are pretty significant, but they're not nearly as significant from a policy perspective or, or, you know, discussion with North House as a partner perspective as some of these things that you're talking about right now.
You know, the first two things he said were, you know, the valuation of the rent and the correlation of that rent to, to market value, and how we might incorporate, you know, some of these other types of things, like in-kind services or capital investments or even payments of some sort. I mean, I think that's where we're, we're stuck right now, is on that value and what that correlation should be and how it might be provided.
I don't think you're stuck, though, with, I mean, Chris has brought up that issue to me right away, and I think that we've discussed some multiple paths that will satisfy the legal requirements. It's not the legal requirement that you're stuck on.
No, I think we're stuck on the, on the number.
Yeah.
Yeah, or numbers, whatever that may constitute, yeah, I, I think that's, but, but I think if we can open up this conversation and focus on those, those elements, you know, it might take us a while to come, come to agreement as to what we might want to include if, if we want to proceed with this.
What are your thoughts?
No, I have a question, which I guess I, was I thought what you were asking, Chris, but maybe not, I just want to make sure. So, Chris, were you saying, for, and I don't want to refuse to this last time, Mike, but do we have some obligation as to how we set the rent, because we're not allowed to, in a sense, give money to organizations? I thought that's what you were kind of asking.
Well, I mean, I think he answered that, and, and the way he stated it, there's, that the, the question of value of rent is an issue that needs to be addressed, and...
For that reason.
And the correlation to that, to that market value, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But then how we get to that, establishing that value, I mean, right now, we have, we have one that's been based on a previous lease agreement, and what, whether that's inappropriate or, or not, valuation, whether it has a correlation to the market value, you know, I mean, I, I think that's what we're, that's what we're saying, it probably doesn't.
Just to give you an example of a strategy that I think easily addresses any concerns about the legal part of it, and if, based on that reasoning, again, Tracy, where we're not allowed to just gift money to any organization we want, but we are allowed to enter service agreements with any organization we want, and if we start to, in the lease, value some of the things that we've listed here that we do value as contributions, and actually add a cash amount to them, that we could say we will credit as in-kind towards the lease payment, then I think we really can deal with that legal question of what the lease payment needs to be, pretty easy. It still doesn't deal with the perception of the fairness of the deal question. And, you know, some of you have said, I don't need that to be dealt with, I feel like this is a great deal. And some of you said, well, it is a great deal, but we still need to try to, and respect that position in some way. So it, it might just be that it's this number of cash that is the only way. That's the only strategy that I think anyone has said will satisfy that. So unless somebody's got a different idea of how that gets satisfied, that seems to be the one and only sticking point.
Well, and at the last meeting, I said, I mean, I could, I could argue this both ways, that, you know, just raising the lease payment doesn't necessarily achieve the objectives that, you know, we want. It might achieve, for some people, the objectives they want, and that North House would pay more money to the city, but I, I think there's a better return to the city by talking about this issue of, issue of capital investment, and, and to me, that... And, and to me, that, that could be more significant in value than the actual dollars that North House might contribute as, as a lease payment if there wasn't a guarantee of, of capital investment. So.
May I ask a question? So let's imagine that we did come up with a different lease term, and we agreed there was things that could be credited against that. Well, what if the rent was $60,000 a year? But what if the credits equal 90? I'm serious.
I'm completely serious in the sense of-
And you're doing a good job.
Is it tenable that if some of this evolution, North House actually is paying $0, but actually providing-
More.
More services, or, or said differently, the documentation and agreement about the services we're providing is more clearly displayed for the entire community, including the council and North House, to understand. I mean, is that a, is, is that a acceptable outcome? I mean, because it is one of the potential outcomes if, should we go down this path, right?
Right.
I mean, same way, are we going to invite, invest millions of dollars in our future if, if we figure out how to? Very possibly, yes. And you start to credit that against a rental payment, right? I mean, those dollars are just totally different scales.
My, my personal opinion is, is the type of return that we get already far exceeds the value of a lease payment. And, I mean, even if you, even if you throw out a $40,000 or $50,000 lease payment, I mean, you're already doing these in-kind services with school programs and, I mean, I mean, the capital investment that you've already done, these, these things, there's a, there is a value to those. And I'm not sure that we have to, to put a, a dollar amount that we charge North House on top of that. I mean, I, yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I'm at that same place, is that I understand that there's, it's an important part to acknowledge that as part of the lease payment. And now, you know, hearing what Chris has to say as well, like, to cover our butts, it's a really good idea to have this tied in some way, shape, or form to the market value, potential market value of this lease. So if we look at the-
For capital improvements, right?
Well, if we, we can take that value, if we were to agree that that was the value of the, of the lease, then we could set up what the credits that North House could have, you know, in contract for services that would then decrease that lease. But then we have to, we have to agree what those, what those terms are. And, you know, and that might be a certain amount off of, you know, free public, free public programs, free public restrooms. Hey!
Here we go.
Credits per flush?
I actually think that if you agree that that model works, that fleshing out the details of that is a much easier thing to do at a staff level, and that we could put that together for you to look at some ideas.
Probably.
But I don't think we've agreed that that model works yet.
Well, do we? Do we agree that that model works? Do we agree that that's something that we can work with? If we, if we, if we, we, we understand that the North House lease will be, the value of the North House lease will be set at a, at a market rate, and that then we will, we will deduct from the North House, like, from, from that amount, the value of capital, like, a percentage of, of the value of capital investment done by the school as well as programs that are, that are provided to the community. Like, is that, are we in agreement that that could work, that we could do that?
No.
Well, you know, the first things I said to Greg is I'd like to make this objective. I'd like to see numbers and a formula that we can easily explain back to everybody.
Yeah, totally.
Which has always been my goal. If this is the way you guys best think you can achieve that, I, I don't want to just throw out a number because I don't have a number based on anything. All I know is I don't want a percentage that adversely affects their ability to move forward, but I also want to honor and recognize other people in this community who have some valid concerns. And that's not an either-or. It never had to be.
I agree.
So somewhere we have to honor that. And, yeah, I like to see something that, and that we can easily put out later, thanks to things like the internet now, that anybody can read at any time if they want to know what we did, why we did it, and when we did it. And that's why something like this on a formula, to me, is easier. How you get into that, I don't know, but.
The, the important key to make that work at a staff level is to know the answer to Greg's question. If, if the math works so that the payment due is zero, have we achieved both of those things that you described, or have we not?
I don't know.
So should we try that with the assumption that we'll let the math speak for itself? And if we can get it to zero, it gets to zero, and we'll all take a look at it and see what we think about it?
I think that's reasonable. You know, the, another option would be just to set the $4,000 or the, or the, you know, 2% increase as the, as the bottom, like, the baseline, and then, you know, it can be deducted down to that amount.
In the current lease, is there any, any stipulation like that as far as?
No, we used to, in our first six-month lease and then our five-year lease, we had defined payments for the lease amount or the rent amount, but then we got to work off. Any capital investment in improving the property was deducted.
Mm-hmm.
And so effectively, in those first, especially the first four and a half years, we paid almost, well, once we were out of the first year, we paid almost no rent because we were just doing so much constant improvement to campus.
Mm-hmm.
And then that vanished instead for this other calculation we added when we went to the 25 years, because that wasn't tenable to imagine.
Right.
And I'm sure it's in here, but how, how, how much capital have you invested over the last?
Well, in the past 10 years, we think about 1.3. Yeah. Yeah. And that, yeah. We've taken on other liabilities in buying the new property, but we don't, we haven't spent all that money yet, so.
Okay.
Well, I think we've got a very, a very intriguing model here. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to make a motion to ask, I guess, staff to, to flesh out a 50-year lease with 2.4 million dollar capital investment over the next 10 years and just otherwise keep, and double the current lease amount.
So you're throwing another idea into the mix?
Well, I, I think I've mentioned doubling.
Okay.
So say a little bit more about this, about what you're saying. Well, is there, okay, is there a second for this motion? Anyone? Well, then that, that motion dies for lack of a second. I will make a motion then for, for, to instruct staff to draft a, a lease agreement for, let's do, let's do 50 years, 50-year lease agreement.
Do you want your 55 number?
Well, why don't we just go 55? Let's go 55.
Yeah, let's say 53, so the end of this, like, odd number that's distinctive, you know, not like 75, it's 78 years.
Okay, let me finish my motion.
I'm doing it on election year.
So a 55-year lease that will incorporate market value of the, of the, of the, the lease itself with deductions for services rendered to the community and stipulation of the 2.4 million dollars in capital campaigns over the next 10 years. Is there anything?
What about yours?
So that's, that's the expectation.
Can you repeat one more?
I might have to, I might have to.
Get yourself a second, too.
Yeah, so.
He said 55-year lease, market value, lease payment with deductions for services rendered to the community, and 2.4 million in capital contributions in the next 10 years.
Can I ask a question about that?
You can ask for clarity.
I mean, clarity, I guess. So in that setting, and maybe I missed that when Chris was talking about it, but that would be more reflective of the improvements to the property in the lease amount?
I think what we mean by market value leaves a lot of room for thought yet, but-
Good, that's all.
I need a clarification as well, and maybe it overlapped, but the, the capital improvement is separate from the market value.
Correct.
Which capital, the ones to come or the ones that have already-
I'm not going to epizonalize them by changing the market value by 2.4 million dollars if he's successful, are you?
No, because that's-
Are you going to invest it all on the property you're leasing from us?
That's the question, what happens to market value in the next 10 years if he's successful?
We're talking about the property, the, the market value of the property, not the market value of North House.
Well, nobody's signing anything here. We're trying to find a model that we think might work.
Real estate.
Yeah, I'll second that motion, because I'd like to have some more discussion on this, because I think this is the, the direction I would like to see this, this, this go.
Okay, good, so we've got a second. So now we're actually back on, back on track here. Phew, we're floating and nowhere to land in for a second.
This issue of market value is, I think, the one, part of the conversation we've not really had, you know, and the, the existing lease-
Discussion.
Has, has a basis that's reflective of a standard that was prior to the improvements. You know, we haven't talked about whether that's going to be the case for this or not, and I think we have to have that conversation, obviously, as to how do we arrive at market value, what it was.
I actually don't think that's as important as, it looks like almost everyone else in the room thinks it is. What, what it ends up being, well, first of all, this idea that it should just be based on the unimproved property, that's clearly part of what's creating the uncomfortableness of the existing deal. And that people aren't sure how appropriate that is. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me that we would charge them rent for the property that they built and improved, but eventually it starts to make sense. I mean, that, that deal only lasts for a certain amount of time. So I would say you would probably want to look at the improved value of the property, but that still doesn't help you figure out what market rent amount is. So there's so much room here to try and figure out what we mean by market rent, that we can find a number that, that makes sense to people. And I think we actually have to propose some stuff concretely before we're going to know if everybody's comfortable with that. So I'd say if that's our goal, let's, let us try to do that. It's still, I mean, the key still is going to be the reasoning behind the credit that goes towards it.
Right.
And whether that is something that people feel like explains our position enough to respect the, the folks that might think this is an unfair deal. So that's the more important side of the coin in my mind. And maybe it ends up being zero, or maybe ends up we decide there needs to be some minimum amount. But if we do a, a bad job of explaining the value proposition in, in the lease itself, this model doesn't work. So let's get that right.
And so, I mean, it was market value minus?
He called it deductions for service to the community, which I think is a good way to describe it.
Plus, plus the capital investment.
And also the capital investment, yes.
Do you have any definitive amount of invest-
Community investment?
Community investment, a dollar amount?
Oh, gosh. You know, we invest $40,000 a year in local youth and free community programming, and I guess some of the, a portion of that's instructor development. You know, we have students who participate, you know, we, we have, we do free films in, right, during winter's gathering, you know, so it's pretty easy for me, or, for instance, local discounts on tuition. I mean, that's a service to the community, I'd argue. So we could quantify, and probably we'd want to agree on what we get to quantify.
Yeah.
But 40 grand is-
Yeah, all the funds from the, off, no, all the, all, 40 of the $50,000 from the Anderson Trust comes, is directly translated basically into program services targeting mostly local youth and adults, and about maybe, yeah, a portion into the instructor retreat.
And I can imagine that the, the basket of goods that we're going to talk about as potentially being included in this is significantly larger than that. And then we'll just have to decide which of those do the best job of trying to address the concerns that people might have about the fairness of the deal, and which ones don't seem to do a job of that.
My qualitional complexity, if, if you talk about market value and you hire an appraiser to come in and evaluate the income stream, you're going to have an extremely difficult time because there's no net income.
Yeah, I don't think we need to make it that complicated. The existing idea about establishing market value is just use the assessor, and they already do all the work that I think needs to be done. But the market value of the property is different than what's a market value of the lease. And I think there's a lot of flexibility for us to think about that still.
Yeah, to whom?
Yeah.
Good, good point. Jay, thank you for eloquently pointing this out with your motion.
Great, somebody thinks that. Thank you. Do we have any other discussion?
I just want to say one more time, I'm really sorry because you started this process a long time ago, and you made a point of coming to all of us so we could kind of be ready by the time that was important to you. And I really hope we keep moving along at a fast speed. We've got a lot of other things to think about, too. And while we're, our brains are in on it, I really hope that we get this done soon for you.
Great.
Anything else? On favor?
Aye.
Propose? Carries? All right, so we will be contacting your staff to start the drafting of a 55-year lease agreement.
Does anybody on the council feel a desperate need to participate in that process? Because I think we'd probably welcome that.
I would be interested, but I don't have to.
Well, I just, I'll say then that as we're developing ideas, we may just come and share them with you a little bit to try and keep us thing moving.
Sounds good. All right, thank you for all the information. Thank you for sticking with us on this and for providing a lot of really useful information. We will definitely be needing that information in the future.
Understood.
So we'll be working on this, so.
Okay, thanks, you guys.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Tracy, thanks for being an advocate for other concerns that, other content matters that have been brought up.
Well, I hear, and I didn't hear it just in the last couple of months.
Yeah.
And I heard it from interesting people the other day out of the blue that kind of surprised me. Wasn't what I expected to hear from certain people.
Okay, so we're going to move right along. So we have a preliminary levy that we need to take a look at. Since the last time we looked at the levy, there have been a couple of, a couple of changes, and I'll let Mike take, take and explain those.
We'll start with the beautifully colored spreadsheet. You really don't need to spend any time on this. This is an updated library budget. I'll just say that you approved the library budget, and then afterwards, we had, we were discussing some adjustments to salary costs, and more pointedly, we were hit with a pretty significant 29% increase in our medical insurance costs. The library board has discussed that and would, rather than making changes to other parts of their budget, would like the city and the county to approve those increases as a part of the levy. And so this spreadsheet just shows all the increases in the expenses are put right into the request directly to the city and the county for levy. And I just built that into all these other spreadsheets, so that's included in this preliminary levy number. You can take that question up separately if you want, but just know that if you approve the levy as, as it's described in this resolution, it assumes you are going to approve the additional increase to the library department.
And what's that additional increase?
Well, it was-
Is that the 18,000?
18,000.
Yeah, it's, it is.
Okay.
And ma- most of the increase is in medical insurance. I think it's actually more than 18,000, but.
Down at the bottom, the second to last line of the orange.
Yeah.
Okay, why am I not seeing this?
Yeah, that's for city or county, so for us, the amount.
Oh, this is probably an older copy.
Is between this year's budget and next year's budget. It's an increase of 18,000 for us. It's not an increase of 18,000 between what you approved and what this shows.
So they're saying is-
Wait, wait, but just for us, you're saying?
Yeah, that's half of the increase, because the county-
$36,000 increase total.
Yeah, between this budget, this existing 2017 budget and this revised 2018 budget, the total amount difference is 36,609.
But just for us, it's eighteen.
Yeah, half of that.
And then 29 total, citywide.
Oh, no, the 29%, well, 29 was a percentage.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So, that, that, that number's there. I just included this spreadsheet because the library board specifically talked about it, and are requesting of you that you include that entire amount of increase from their previous request in the levy.
And, and can you tell me what the original budget was, increase was? I mean, we have 11.69 increase with this additional amount.
The original increase that the library proposed was, was an increase of three point something?
No, it was, it was just under five.
Just under five.
Under five.
What happened to the second half of the, remember, we did that two-year? This is the-
This, we're living in the second half right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which if you look at the, at the increase-
It's been so much fun, it's just gone by so fast.
I know.
If you look at the, the increase, year in 2016, year in 2016, year in 2017, that's the, the 15-point whatever percent that we needed for the, for the increase in staffing. So now they're, they're proposing an 11.69% because those, those expenses were unforeseen.
Now, this is one of the risk factors that we talked about when we developed the library budget in the two-year plan, is that with new staff position, we now have two positions that are full-time, benefit-earning, and the difference in costs between a single or a family plan is significant. And so if there's any changes in that, that $15,000 suddenly shows up in the expense side of the budget that wasn't there before, but we don't have any control over it. So that's, you know, that's just part of the risk factor that we've got with the library budget, and, and the strategy that the library board is asking you to use to adjust that is to just take that increase into the levy for next year. So let's move on to some other spreadsheets here.
This doesn't affect, though, that you would ask, it's not, before it's automatic, no, it isn't, because it's-
Because it's above five.
It's got above the-
It's not automatic, no. So it'll still be something that the county board will have to talk about as well. So as you, in your preliminary levy, I've included it. You can still discuss it over the course of the next few months as to whether you actually want to do it. The county board will be talking about it at the same time.
Okay, so now we're back to this.
Oh, you got, oh, you got, okay.
Yeah, so this is, it shows some historic numbers for you, but the action is all in the shaded top columns, the budget for 2018 and the revenues. We talked about, again, the, the increases to some salaries and the increases in the health insurance as the primary factors for changes in the expense numbers since you first seen the budget. On the revenue side, really the most important number to look at is $985,000 out of the Rec Park. And what this all then adds up to is the next spreadsheet, a levy requirement to fund that budget of $980,000, an increase of 8.2% over the 2017 budget. But we also know that we have some significant moving parts in the next couple of years with our debt payments. In particular, 2018 has just a partial debt payment for the public works facility. In 2019, we realized another $75,000 of debt payment. So we don't want to ignore that when we're looking at this levy, and so you asked me to look at a multi-year analysis. This is a pretty simplified look, and I'll try to just explain what it means. 2017, these are our adopted budget amounts, so there's a $906,000 levy that we're currently collecting in 2017. Of that, $700,000 is revenue that we're using to pay for our general fund operations, and $210,000 is debt payment money that we're levying. In 2018, I've made some changes below those numbers, so you can see now, we have a sell for Rec Park revenue that we might add, in addition to the $985 that's currently in there, liquor revenue that we might add, in addition to the $200,000 that's currently built into the budget.
And what's, what's-
And reserves that we might use.
What's, what's the rationale for the, for the liquor increase?
I'll talk about that in a moment. And reserves that we might use as a way to adjust from having significant increases one year, flat the next year, significant increases or decreases the next year. So just using our revenue as a way to smooth out the transition. And then, also, the last one, council priorities, we had that line item built into the budget for a number of years now. One, as a way to fund some of the projects that the council's identified as priorities, like the comprehensive plan, or like paying for design work on some of our construction projects, like the public works facility. But it was also as a way to make sure that, it's a room in the budget to absorb the debt payments when they arrived. So using council priorities means we'll take the remaining amount that's currently in that line item and use it for something else. So what are those something elses? In 2018, if we added $30,000 more dollars to our revenue line item, we can make that levy 950, which is this increase of 4.88, just under 5%. That is $725,000 of money that we're using to pay for our operations, or about 3.5% increase in our operation levy, and $256,000 that we're using for debt payments. So that is all of the additional public works facility payment, plus a shifting of one or another payment that we were levying for, for a, a previous water improvement, that we're going to use water money to pay for instead, because one, another payment that they're making is going to go off the books in 2018. So that's the 255 is the suggested what we could have for debt in 2018. 2019 is full-on everything, and as you can see, it's a big number. It's $350,000, it's a whole 'nother hundred. So we increased by, now I'm just making some assumptions about our operations, that we increased that another 2%, plus we have to come up with another hundred in debt. So we're going to have to find that money somewhere else in the budget, either in the levy, or we cut operational expenses, or we use some of our other revenue sources, like the Rec Park or the liquor store, or our own reserves. So since this bump in debt payments in 2019 is just temporary, it actually goes down again in a pretty noticeable way in 2020, I would suggest that we plan on just using some reserves in 2019 to help smooth that out, and that we also look to increase Rec Park revenues again. So $65,000 increase is on top of 985. We're talking about, you know, $1,050, which we made more than that last year, we made that last year. We're going to make more than that this year, and we're talking about two years from now, having that built into the budget. So I still feel like that's a pretty conservative way for us to think about Rec Park revenues, and, and look at a potential levy increase, again, of over four, less than five, for that year, that swallows that whole debt payment, and looks at about a 2% increase. And then in 2020, we do the same thing with our operational costs, we increase to 2%. Our debt payments go down to 313, but I'm adding another $150,000 of debt payments here, because there's another project that we haven't really figured out yet. It's probably a year early for actually seeing that debt, unless we do the project next year, or we get it really going next year, and I'm talking about City Hall Liquor Store now. We probably are a year early here, but I wanted to start to represent the idea that we need to think about that next one, too. So if we add this 150 now, we have to come up with even more Rec Park revenues. We have to come up with, that's probably using the last of that council priority line item space that you have in the budget, plus we need more, otherwise we're going to be looking at a significant levy increase, and that's why I'm adding the liquor revenues. One, they're making, we're making enough money now in liquor revenues to fund $240,000 of contributions towards our operations and debt. So I think we'll easily be able to do that in 2020. We don't want to do it now necessarily, because we're still saving that money, and we're going to use that cash, and right now we've got, you know, a million dollars in the liquor fund, that we're going to use some substantial amount of to help fund this project. So we're saving cash over the course of this, this four-year period, but at some point, we're going to have to actually start making a debt payment, and so we'll use some of that money we were saving, and instead we use it to pay debt on the project. So we're slowly building in the ability to absorb that payment, and then I'm demonstrating here in 2020 that we can do that with what I think is reasonable expectations on our expense side, conservative expectations on our revenue side, and levies that are in that 4% to 5% range for the next three years. So that, I, I feel like that's a good picture, especially given the fact that you, you've got some options here to be more aggressive on the revenue side of things, and you can even wait and see how we do before you have to make those decisions on being more aggressive. So this feels like kind of a worst-case scenario, and you get the ability to do another big project with a pretty substantial debt payment in 2020.
I like this, because now it gives us an opportunity to take a look at those Rec Park revenues and liquor revenues, and incorporate them into, into a budget, but we're not using them before we know that they're there. And so, so we account for them in a way that we haven't done, done before, at least that I haven't known that we've done it before.
I think we've always done it this way, but we maybe just haven't laid it out for people to see it and understand.
Well, I haven't been able to see this as clearly as this, this, this to lay it out three years ahead of time, to show that those revenues are being accounted for, rather than just going into the general fund and being there to be used. I mean, they're still there, I mean, I know that, but now we're at least recognizing that they're going to be accounted for in this budget and-
Do you just whip this up Friday morning?
This morning, yeah. Oh, wait, no, I sent it you on Friday morning.
Friday morning, quick little. But that's, that's all based on 8% this year, right?
Well, 8% is the difference between that and what's in the resolution, which is 8.2%. And this three-year analysis is, I've already said, well, we can add more Rec Park revenue in 2018 if you want to, because I feel like that's still pretty conservative to do that. So this 8.2% takes in all the expenses, including our significant increase in health insurance costs, and allows you the ability to pay for it. So that's kind of the outside maximum number that I think we would ever recommend for this year, which is what the preliminary levy is kind of intended to do. And then this three-year analysis starts to give you some pretty simple ways to bring that down before December, and, and if you have a goal in mind of what you'd like that to be, we can talk about other strategies as well.
I like the way that's, that makes-
Good.
The forks were my brain.
I think that, does it still, and the 2018 in this three-year analysis, it, it does account for the increase in the, in the healthcare expenses and everything like that.
It does, yep. It takes all, all of the existing numbers we know of for expenses that we're planning on next year.
So then, instead of the, the 8.1, or 8.2 that we saw on the other spreadsheet, we'd be looking at a 4.88.
And that is, not making a recommendation for either of those tonight, I'm telling you that I think 8.2 is the high end of what we would ever recommend, just based on what we know about our expenses that we're planning on next year, and that $30,000 of additional Rec Park revenue built into the budget would have the effect of bringing it below 5%. That's an arbitrary place to go, it's an arbitrary amount of money, so I think that it probably deserves some more conversation about what your goal is there and how you want to achieve it.
The, so right now, we just need to set the preliminary?
Yes.
And the preliminary would be, if we set the preliminary at 8.2, that would be the max. We can always lower it if we can't make it higher.
I'll make a motion, Resolution 2017-40 for setting the preliminary 2018 levy at 8.2.
Second.
Motion in the second. I, we do realize that by accepting this motion, that, that we are, we are agreeing to, to the library's 11.78. No, we're not?
No, I don't think you have to make those conditional.
Okay.
You're, you're allowing yourself to be able to fund that. You're not absolutely saying yes. So you can still continue that conversation with the library and the county.
Right, good, good clarification.
And don't we, don't, don't we have, or, isn't there some prevent?
So your, your role in the library's budget is after the library board suggests what they'd like it to be, you get to decide whether you agree with it or not. If you do, and it's below a 5% increase, then the county board is obligated to also accept it. And if it's not below 5% increase, then you get to discuss it together with the county board.
Which is what we did two years ago.
It's what we've done, yeah, for the past couple of years, really.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a clarification, which I think you guys were talking about, and I just didn't catch it. So are they the majority, when you add the total cost of the insurance increase?
Yeah.
Are they like half of it? Are they three-quarters of it?
The library?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Did they ask that one?
I'm not sure, so let's, let's find out if I understood what you were asking. A 30% increase in our health insurance cost is $80,000, right? So that's not, there's two people earning benefits in the library budget, and we've got 20 people that are earning benefits in the city.
Okay.
So, yeah, eight of them are getting paid for through the utility fund, so they're not part of this mix at all.
Oh.
You know, one of them's getting paid for, two of them are getting paid for through the liquor fund, so they're not part of this mix at all. So it starts to get down to-
That's why you keep saying putting it in the general.
Yeah.
Okay, now I see why you kept saying, like, well, isn't that what we're doing, because the rest really aren't.
No.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion in the second, any further discussion? For setting the preliminary levy at 8.2. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, that is the preliminary levy. Moving right along, then, we have one more thing that we need to do on the docket. It was an email that was sent out to you two days?
Yes, two days, so apologies for that. This is definitely one of the things that has been suffering from our extreme short staffedness in the office.
Staffedness?
Yes. So we would have liked to have this out regularly with the packet. I think there's at least two f's in that. But since I've sent this out, I added one more person that we had, we did get the Angry Trout's information as well, and so I would say please add them to the list of licenses. They have a beer and wine license.
They're on there.
Oh, maybe I printed out, but the one I emailed, they weren't out.
Oh, okay.
And then, so the, the one we're missing is, there's two we're missing, actually. Sydney's, we don't have their information yet. I, I know that they intend to reapply, but it's just not complete. And the Curling Club, which has a, a beer license, we don't have all their information yet. So if you want to approve them, there's a kind of a caveat at the bottom of the memo that says, you know, before we send it to the state, we're going to make sure all the appropriate information is here. So you could add Sydney's, and the Curling Club is on the list already, two-year approvals for renewals, and then we'll talk about the new one after that.
I feel, I feel comfortable adding Sydney's to that, contingent on their proper completion and, and the sheriff's background check thing.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve them, to approve the, the list of licensees, because we're not, we're not doing the new one.
Not yet.
Not yet.
These are just renewals.
Yep, so, so, okay, so we've got the new list, plus Sydney's. Yeah, and did you second that?
Yep.
Okay, so we got a second. Any further discussion?
Could you please clarify the Sunday license?
We charge an extra $200 for full liquor licenses for selling on Sundays. That's just the way it is.
Just liquor.
They all do opt for that, so it'd be just as easy for us to go back and change our ordinance Sunday and say, we don't charge extra for Sundays, we just charge 2,500 for liquor licenses, because no one ever says no, I don't want Sunday.
Especially now that the liquor store is open on Sundays, it's not like it's an exception, so they tend to whatever anymore.
Now we're keeping this every day. Does that help? Got it? Any further conversation? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carries. All right, so now we got a new one, new one, so everybody's probably heard about, but now you're seeing the first real effects of. There's a new owner of the Harbor Light property that's operating a business. They're calling it the Wonder Bar Eatery and Campground. They are applying for a full liquor license. We do have all their information. It's a new application, so it may take a little more process with the state to get everything up and running, but we've had a licensee there for most of the history of that building doing the liquor establishment.
that building during the liquor establishment, so...
Well, if we pass this, so we've gotten their application, their application is complete.
Yep.
So if we pass this, then it still is contingent on the completion of all the state stuff, but we acknowledge that, that they've met our permitting criteria.
Yeah, they, there's only, they're still applying for a state tax ID. That's really the only information on our application that was incomplete. Otherwise, everything else they've done, they've submitted, they've paid the fees. It'll be the same process that for this new license that it is for all the renewals. We'll ask the sheriff to do a background check, we'll send it to the state. Because it's new, there'll be some additional work for the state to do to figure out, just to make sure that they meet all the requirements, that the facility is appropriate, that they have all their other licenses that the state would require.
I would make motion to approve.
Motion, sir, second?
Second.
Oh, got it. Tracy, Tracy got it.
Typical.
Any discussion? Wish them all the best, I think it's pretty cool.
Yeah. Unique idea.
Yeah.
See, did they get the property then behind that was part of the conversation night a little over a year ago?
It was west.
It's west, yeah.
Yeah, it was the conversation's part of it.
I believe they acquired the whole piece, yeah.
The tube.
Okay. We can check that later on. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Alright, so let's do our, let's do our updates. So, Mr. Mills?
I think I just went to the Northridge Foods Project.
We could email each other updates.
Sounds good.
There's community gardens, that's all I got to say.
Community, community gardens.
I want to be behind the community center if anyone's interested.
Okay, let's just, we'll go quickly. Anton, what you got?
I'm good.
You're good. Tim?
That's it, nothing. Maybe we got planning commission.
It's been so...
You heard it. You did a good job.
Thank you. I've said no.
Ah!
There you are.
Wow.
That's what happens after nine o'clock.
Yep. I, I went to a creative economy meeting, they're still talking about arts commission stuff. So that's, that's something that we can talk about with the comprehensive plan stuff, active living or the Highway 61 stuff, we're still having conversations with that, that's actually looking very good. And that's about all I had.
So the consultant for Highway 61 has proposed a meeting date at the end of the month, on Thursday the 28th. So we'll be sending out information for the steering committee that's been working on that with them. Probably be a lunchtime deal. You all got a copy of the draft comprehensive plan? That's been moderately distributed to folks that really helped with content creation and to expect to get their feedback and go from there. Please do participate in that review.
The steering, the steering committee, did that diminish?
Of the, for the comprehensive plan? Yeah, I think once we got into content development, there wasn't necessarily a role for them in, in that.
I only saw like three names on there, one with their last name.
Oh, no, that, that'll be improved. The draft just didn't have complete information on that, but that we'll get more of their names on there. Yeah. And otherwise, great meeting, everybody.
With, with the Highway 61 project, had there been a conversation with CJ about whether or not he was going to be able to commit time to, to do this?
Yeah, I talked to him and he's, of course, excited about it, really wants to do it, think this is a critical project and he's been involved in it forever. He did have some stipulations about how it was going to be run, if he was going to be involved in it. And so those, of course, were for the state, not for us. And I think the state is going to accept them all.[1726.38]